He might be taking that.
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for joining us for July 15, 2025 York City Council meeting. At this time, we have our public comments, but prior to that, I just been made aware that we have a group of our wonderful community members here to share some information regarding the East Springersberry property. This item is not on council's agenda currently, but I will kick it off. I know we're going a bit off of schedule, but having our city solicitor flowers share some information about that first.
So there was, the zoning officer did visit the property and has determined that it is currently out of compliance with the zoning ordinance, and so a notice of violation has been issued. What that means is that we're currently following the, we're following Pennsylvania law in attempting to address this, this issue. The next step for the homeowner is to either appeal that notice, obviously bring the property into compliance with the zoning ordinance, or appeal that notice of determination, and that's going to go to the zoning hearing board. Adjacent property owners will get note, if it goes to zoning hearing board, adjacent property owners will get notice of that, and you can attend the zoning hearing board and make your comments there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm pretty sure this is okay, Solicitor Flowers, if anyone has any questions for you after?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
The meeting will be available.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. I know we do have Heather Linen Decker here to share in regards to the 101 East Springersberry. I didn't know if you still wanted to make any comments. You're welcome.
All I wanted to do was put on record that this has been an ongoing issue since last year. We know that the homeowner did approach the city with her plans and was told that she would not be able to go forth with a rooming house or a boarding house without obtaining a variance. She, however, continued to do work within the home and began advertising the home as such. We do appreciate very, very much the inspection that took place on the 20th of June and the notice of violation that was issued today. However, over the weekend, part of the reason a bunch of us are here is because she is advertising on Airbnb and Furniture Finders, which we think ups the ante just a little bit, makes it a little bit more aggressive. We wanted to put on record our adamant objection to any home within Springdale, which is a nationally recognized historic neighborhood, being used as anything other than a single-family residence. Within the city ordinances, it is RS1, variances must be sought, and many of the, many of the things for which RS2 can be given a variance are not allowed under RS1.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone else this evening have any comments regarding Springersberry?
I don't have any prepared comments. I'm Mike Johnson. I live in the Springdale area also. Lived here for 50 years, 52 years, excuse me, and over the years, we've had many zoning cases to deal with in the neighborhood, and I've been very pleased personally how receptive the city has been to work with us on those zoning appeals. So I was head of zoning hearing board for 10 years, but that didn't have anything to do with it. We still, we went through all of them, and in this particular case, I know it sounds very legalistic, and thank you for saying that, but there's really a lot more behind that, that's important to know, and that is that we in Springdale, we, I think I like to always say, we are not being exclusionary at all. We do have nice homes. Many of you who don't live in Springdale have nice homes as well, but we're very proud of the neighborhood, and as a result, we have an association, we have about 175 homes in Springdale. Okay, it's from Rathston to Springersberry, George to Queen is the area, and about 175 homes. We have in excess of 100 people who are members, which I'm not sure, but we may be the only association that actually charges dues, $20 a year, and we use that for a variety of social events. We also use it to put aside funds in case we do need to hire legal assistants to deal with the zoning case, which we had done in this case and would have continued with that if that, will continue if that's needed to use that person. But anyway, this is a home, and I really, the reason I'm telling you about it is just an address to most of you, so just to give you a little bit of an idea, it's along East Springersberry. Those homes were built in the teens, I guess, some in the twenties maybe, that is 1920s. And when all of those, when I moved in, we were concerned, I was a young kid. Said I was been there 50 years, so I had to be pretty young, right? But anyway, I was concerned with the big houses, because everybody was always like, who's going to live in those big houses? Who's going to do that? Well, we've found in Springdale and other areas in the city where does have, do have some large historic homes as well, they are not a problem to sell if they are maintained and if the neighborhood is supporting them to be sure that there aren't rooming houses and other non-residential properties that are in the area, and not that we have anything against rooming houses, but there's, there are only two, I believe I'm correct, only two RS1 areas in all the city of York, one Springdale and the other's Fireside, I think. And it's very important that the city maintain those. If anything, what I would love to see happen, maybe city council will consider this someday, I think those areas could be expanded, the RS1. You know, normally we're like, well, maybe it should be converted from RS1 to RS2. No, it could go the other direction as well. So anyway, I'm just trying to make a little bit of a case for zoning and residential zoning in the city, and this particular home has been lived in consecutively. It's not a big white elephants that've been sitting empty. It's had families living in it, one family living in it, different families, but one family at a time for many years. So this is, it's almost kind of a silly case, but I know we need to go through the legal process.
And if you don't mind, I just was trying to look up the Airbnb listing. If you could find the, the listings that you mentioned and provide them to your attorney, she'll get them to me.
Okay, yeah, we'll be sure to get those to you.
Thank you.
Anyway, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Thank you, Solicitor Flower.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments regarding the property at 101 East Springersberry? We have Mr. Lester Abbott Jr. here for a comment.
Good evening, council. Good evening, audience. I'm Lester Abbott, York City resident for about 35 years. So I come here tonight to talk a little bit, I want to commend, to talk a little bit about immigration. I want to commend two public officials. There was an incident, an immigration incident that happened in June to a long-term city resident, and I want to commend Mayor Helfrich for his timely information that got out there to the public about what was actually going on and how this all came down. That was timely, and I think he did a damn good job. So the other, the other person, the public official that I want to commend is State Representative Carol Hill Evans. She also around that same time put out information on immigration resources for our community and our city residents. That was very timely and very appropriate at the time. I'm going to continue on here just for another minute or two. I, I want to say, back in January, I was here and I stood before you guys, and we talked a little bit about immigration and the bill that was before us and all that. So what I want to say is, back then, I had a fear of the European experience happening here in the United States. Now it's not a fear anymore. The United States is headed full force into a 1930, 30-style European experience. It's going to take many people back then, and I don't mean this to be mean to any of the European citizens or anything like that, but they just didn't know. They didn't have history as a guidance. We have history. We know what happens when hate, and that's all it is, is hate at the federal level takes over. And so it's going to take a lot of people of good conscience to step up here and there to, to kind of like, we have to, we have to meet this hate with, we need to meet this hate head-on, because hate does, doesn't stop one group. Hate moves on to all groups. Which group is going to be next? Which group is going to fall out of favor next? That's my, that's my fear, and that's why I think that we're really headed down that road. So like I say, I just wanted to commend those two public officials. That was very good what they did, and so with that, please stand up when you can, and whenever you can't, just kind of help out, help out your fellow neighbors in, in York City. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any further comments this evening regarding non-agenda items? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Arleta Riviera. I want to address everybody and say hello. Starting April the 20th, 2025, I applied for a handicap application, just want to throw that out to you right now. June 18th at 9:00 a.m., there was a Traffic and Safety Committee meeting. I was told to, by the Permit Zoning Committee, to voice my opinion regarding a complaint about approval of a curb cut at 485 West Prince Street. That would be in the rear, that would be on Salem Avenue, the 400 block of Salem Avenue. And attending the committee meeting, I was informed that my complaint was not valid due to the fact that the Permit Committee already approved the, wasn't the curb cut, the driveway. First, why was I lied to regarding attending the Traffic and Safety Committee meeting? That's called a runaround. Okay, second, while I was attending the meeting at the permit, I was talking to Mr. Montez and asking him about the permit regarding 485 West Prince Street, and was told that the permit was for, for a fence, a roof, and a shed. The permit was given at September of 2024. It was approved September 2024. And I asked about, well, well, where's the permit for the driveway? And he was looking on his computer at 485 Salem Avenue, and he could not find the permit for 485 Salem Avenue for the driveway. So he called over Mrs. Nancy, I don't know if that's the supervisor or whoever, but she was in the room next to him, and he asked her about the permit for 485 Salem Avenue, and she said, go ahead, look it up, and they're looking it up on the computer, and they could not find the permit for 485 Salem Avenue. Well, Mrs. Nancy said, well, it's at 585 Salem Avenue, and he said, no, it's 485. She said, pull up 585 Salem Avenue. So he pulled up 585 Salem Avenue, and by golly, that permit was at 585 Salem Avenue. He said, see? I looked over and said, yeah, see? And, but he wasn't telling me to see, he was telling Mrs. Nancy to see. But I looked over and I saw, okay, all righty, now we're going to see this. Now, permit's at 585 Salem Avenue, but we got a driveway at 485 Salem Avenue. Now, I'd like to know how that was approved, because I asked Mr. Montez, how was that approved? And he showed me a picture of an overhead picture that they got approved due to the fact of that picture, and I said, how are you going to prove that picture? Because we really have a problem as far as parking on Salem Avenue, the 400 block of Salem Avenue, because we actually have to fight to park. All right, I'm supposed to have a handicap parking space in April, and the man that was sitting at the Traffic and Safety said, well, who are you? And I gave him my name, Arleta Riviera. He said, well, I don't have nothing on my paperwork with your name on it. And I said, what? He said, well, when did you apply for it? And I said, in April. My doctor gave you the, you know, the application in April. Well, nothing came over my desk. All righty. I left that meeting because there was no need for me to be there because, all right, the next day. Well, there was a handicap thing on my sidewalk. Now, where did that come from? You ain't seen nay, none of my paperwork. Now, I'm sick and tired of the runaround that I'm getting for this property here on 485 Salem Avenue, which the permit was for 585 Salem Avenue, but I bet you by now, they going to change it to 485 Salem Avenue, because today they came up with the yellow line so they can cut the curb cut, and they're going to eliminate three and a half to four parking spaces due to the fact that these guys already approved it without even coming out to see how that would affect the parking in Salem Avenue. Now, I have a parking handicap space. In order for my daughter to have a space when she gets home from work at 10:30, 11:00 o'clock, I park my car away from that handicap space, so when she gets home, I pull my other car, my car into that so she can have a space to park. Why? Because one night she was riding around and got pulled over by the cops because he thought she was looking for drugs, but she was looking for a place to park so she can come home safely. That's what I have to say. I would really like y'all to look at that and investigate on that, because this was terribly and totally, I'm going to say illegal, and was very, very irresponsible for York City to go and just don't do the right thing, literally don't do the right thing. And I hope when you go back and look into the paperwork that they said, that they did, and it does come out properly, the way I said it, because like I said, I seen it myself.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you mind completing a public comment form in the back with your information so that we can have the administration contact you? They're right in the back on the little table back there. Thank you.
Hello, you didn't call me. Yeah, but hello, but I want to talk about the same thing, but not directly in that way.
Can you please give us your name, please?
Oh, excuse me, my name is Tino Onishaswini. I live at 106 West Boundary Avenue, York, Pennsylvania. My basic concern is the way that whole matter, she didn't, wasn't real clear on how that all worked, but it was, they were very unprofessional. They, one, should have never sent us to the zoning committee where that gentleman over there, I don't know his name, was very rude and disrespectful to me. And first place, they should have never sent us up there to that meeting, because it was already a matter that was already taken care of, number one. Councilman Elizabeth, she was there at that meeting, she can explain how it kind of got really out of hand, I mean, really, really out of hand. For instance, when I was walking out of the meeting, because we were leaving, the gentleman was very disrespectful, literally. I thought that was very, 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 very distasteful, which I, myself, I'm going to apologize to everybody that was in that meeting, responded to him in the way that he wanted me respond, because I turned around and said, you put me out, you know, and then I had to recruit myself, but I only said it because he really took me to that level. But no one took in consideration at all, nor did they even come out and look to see what was going on in that neighborhood. For one, as she said, the permit is not for the 400 block, it was for the 500 block, and the fact that now that they're going to put a driveway there, and we all know that driveway has to be 15 feet on both sides, which is going to take up not just the driveway, but then 30 more feet of parking spaces in that area. I go over there, well, not now, but at the time, I was going over there babysitting their grandchild at 4 o'clock in the morning, I literally had to sit on the corner in my car waiting for someone to come home from work, myself and two other cars, to see who's going to get this parking space, or the first person that pulls out. That's how bad parking is over there in that area, and I really think that we need to do a better job, one is respecting folks that come up with concerns, and two, as far as what do, do gentlemen, what's going on in their neighborhood.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment this evening regarding non-agenda items? Yes, sir.
Manuel Gomez, city resident, of course. Welcome back. You've been very accommodating, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. First things first, big ditto to Mr. Lester Abbott. Big, big ditto for myself. I'm sure many others would agree, at least when it comes to help your neighbors. We all have a mutual interest, we all live here together, find that mutual interest, help each other. I want to highlight two things. I remember Charlotte Bergdorff would get up here, there were meetings, and she'd always find something, even if we screamed at each other like cats and dogs, always found something positive to highlight, events usually. Two things that occurred, I think they're fairly well-publicized, but Downtown Inc. is now Main Street America accredited. That's a big thing. It's a huge thing to be widely recognized by your peers and to show you operate at a high standard, and I'm a big fan of standardization in all things, especially that type. I think it needs to be trumpeted a little bit more. If I stole your thunder, let's just make a chorus, and you guys can repeat it later. Mars Park, which is GTOG's, Brian Gooden, talk to him a bit. What it sounds like they're working on is almost a business incubator, a flea market is what they're calling it, a space for vendors, organizations to come together, meet, unite, find those mutual interests, maybe create something, test the waters. I'm over the moon about it, just what I've heard about it. He told me the mayor was instrumental, Code was exceptional in terms of who helped push this along. Masters Academy, I think, is providing some of that space there, or the actual space for them to get this done. I think July 27th is the inaugural launch of that Mars Park, which I think is what they're calling it. They're somewhere on Facebook, I deplore Facebook, but I know they're on there somewhere. You can find GTOGs, which is Brian Gooden. I think that's wonderful, and I bring this up for a reason, there's a context, and we have a lot of familiar faces here that would probably agree with me. We need more small business opportunity. We need spaces where there's low barriers to entry, where people can test the waters and see what they can do, network, grow together, and just be visible. We need that more. It served a little bit during the pandemic, where people were just trying things for themselves. I would love to see more of that, more of that, and I want you guys maybe support it as best as you can. Think of your role. What do you do to either expand or deter business development in the city? Always keep that in mind. I hear a lot from the small businesses as I come and go. A lot of people watch these meetings. You'd be surprised, they can't always make it. A lot of times, I would like to repeat some of the things I'm told, it's not enough time, and we get mired in what our interests are many times, but small businesses are hurting. And small businesses are hurting, it's because the people are hurting. So I want you guys to continue to think outside of the box. That Mars Project sounds to me like something out of the box, but you guys, regulatory role in everything, you can really help shape things in the city. Let's try to do it in a way that is more beneficial. Just always keep it in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank Manuel for reminding me, not only of Charlotte, but also of Yorkfest. So I was walking around today with our event coordinators, our outside party that we hired, and Yorkfest will be coming back to the rail trail, and we're very excited. It's the last weekend of the month of August, and just wanted to take this time to announce that we are trying our best to make this a Yorkfest for everyone. So some may recall that, well, I would just say, in the past, while it was a major and wonderful event for the city of York, not everyone felt included in that event, and we are working very hard to make this York-focused, Pennsylvania-focused. We had wonderful artists, sometimes coming from very far away, but we know we have wonderful artists here. So I hope that they will reach out to my office at mayorsoffice@yorkcity.org. It's a great way if you want to participate, if you want to sponsor. We're, we're very excited, and it's one of my goals, as I'm going out the door here, to try and bring back these wonderful events like the Mother's Day Street Fair, which was amazingly successful, 10,000 people coming out after we hadn't done it in five years. And, and now I'm hoping that we see the same success while we try to bring back Yorkfest.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment this evening on non-agenda items? Okay, at this time, we will call our legislative meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Buck?
Here.
John Esqu.
Here.
Dennis?
Here.
Buckingham?
Here.
Washington?
Here. And everyone that can stand, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, we will take action on previous meeting minutes. I make a motion to approve our June 3, 2025. Second. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that stands. At this time, presentations, awards, and comments, and announcements. Council does have a comment at this time. It is in regard to our comprehensive plan delays. As a council, we wish to address the ongoing concerns and confusion surrounding the status of the York 2044 Comprehensive Plan. This plan is a roadmap that guides land use, economic development, infrastructure, public services, and sustainability goals for the city over the next two decades. It is essential for attracting investment, securing grant funding, and making informed policy decisions. Despite a public hearing on March 18, 2025, where the plan was scheduled for final passage, that same evening, it was removed from the agenda at the mayor's request because he said he wanted to incorporate comments from the hearing. As such, consideration was then moved to the April 1, 2025 meeting, when it was again pulled from the agenda, also at the mayor's request, this time citing a desire to make specific language changes. Since April 1, council has received no communication from the mayor or administration regarding the plan's status or revised timeline. We wish to clarify the inaccuracies published in the recent York Dispatch article that are misleading. The plan is not sitting with council, nor does it remain in committee. The plan is exclusively under the mayor's purview as he requested its removal from council's agenda for edits. It remains unclear why the administration has not taken more decisive steps to advance this foundational work, especially given its impact on long-term planning and funding opportunities for the city of York. We are hopeful and look forward to receiving an update from the mayor and the administration via our August 19 council meeting. Thank you. At this time, we have Mayor John Brenner here from the Pennsylvania Municipal League. He is the executive director, and he will, for a presentation this evening. We're so happy to have you with us, Mayor Brenner.
Well, thank you. Thank you. It's nice to just show up and get applause. I mean, that's wonderful. It's great to see all of you, especially the residents of our great city, and see you participating in the most important thing we have in this great country, and that's democracy, and giving your opinion and staying involved. I was so glad to hear about neighborhood associations. I was so glad to hear about zoning and other issues, and that really goes to the core of what our organization is about. So Madam President, members of council, our wonderful city clerk, Diana Thompson, I think who's been here longer than I've been around, so, and of course, our solicitor, the mayor, and administrative folks. The Pennsylvania Municipal League is your statewide association in Harrisburg. It's our job to encourage and empower effective local government through advocacy, through education, and through support for our members. York has been a member of the Pennsylvania Municipal League since its founding in 1900, and believe it or not, it was in 1899 that the mayor of Erie and the mayor of Bradford, two third-class city mayors, were talking, and they were commiserating, as we sometimes do in local government, that people in Harrisburg weren't paying a lot of attention to what was happening in our third-class cities, like Erie and Bradford and York and Wilkes-Barre and on and on. So they wanted to form an organization to be the voice of third-class cities in Pennsylvania. They met here in York in 1900 for their very first convention, and they elected the president of the, the League of Third-Class Cities of Pennsylvania is what it was called, and the mayor- And the mayor at the time was the mayor of York, Mayor Geis, who became the first president of the league. And that is when they adopted the bylaws. And that's why today, I'm humbled to stand before you and recognize York as a member of the organization today that now represents nearly 150 cities, boroughs, and townships. We've changed our name, we've broadened our scope, we serve all of local government in this great Commonwealth, but still, most of our urban communities in the entire state, and we're very proud of that. So this year is our 125th anniversary because of the founding here in York. And so I wanted to take a couple of minutes and thank you all and recognize you. We have a slate that was made here in Pennsylvania. Thanks to our friends at Wells Fargo for sponsoring these. We are presenting these slates to 148 communities across the Commonwealth. And it says, "Celebrating Strengthening Communities: 125 Years." You're a proud member of the Pennsylvania Municipal League. We thank you for your engagement. Please keep coming to our trainings, come to our conference in the fall, the Municipal Leadership Summit. We'll actually be in Erie, ironically, during our 125th convention. So we hope you'll join us. The league is a resource for elected and appointed officials at the local level and all residents. So if you want to visit the website at pml.org, there's a lot of great information. We do a lot of wonderful training and educational programs for officials across the state. So I'm still a York City resident. And although I drive to Harrisburg every day and then venture across the state, it's an absolute honor to represent this city and to take a few lessons that we learned back in the day in working with all of you on our revitalization, on our strengthening of this great community. You've come a long way and you have a bright future here in York if you all continue to roll up your sleeves and get the job done. So on behalf of our president, Mayor Slaughter from Williamsport, our board of directors and staff, I'd like to congratulate you all. And if we could just take a quick picture for social media with the members of council, we'd be pleased to do that. So congratulations, York.
Oh, thank you.
This will take two minutes and then it'll be a picture. You can be in the picture. Oh, the other thing I wanted to tell you is I have a picture in my office of York City Council from 1920.
Oh, wow.
1920, someone said about the 1920s earlier. 1920. Now, what do you think that picture looks like? The members of council from 1920?
They're all men.
What do you think? They're all men and they're all?
White.
They're all white and they're all?
Old.
That's right. They're like me and older. They're all old. So today, across Pennsylvania, the diversity of local government is fantastic. And we have more women in elected and appointed positions today than we ever did in our history. It's fantastic. And York is a fine example. That's right. You sure are. Why don't you hold this? Don't drop it.
A little angle shot here. Thank you. I can even chew my finger from the ceiling.
Thank you. Let me get a Clara. All right.
Yeah, you're welcome. Hey, I just gotta get a bunch of things.
Thanks for a couple of minutes.
No problem.
I know you're good.
This is doing good.
Keep going.
Thank you so very much, Mayor Brenner. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, our next legislative meeting of council will be held on Tuesday, August 19 at 6 o'clock PM here in council chambers. All agenda items are due by 12 noon on August 13. At this time, we will jump into our subdivision and land development, HARB. Up next is Resolution Number 43.
Ooh, girl, thank you.
So introduced. Yep.
Resolution Number 43, introduced by Elizabeth Bup. Be resolved and council hereby approve certificates of appropriateness for work to be done at 48 North Beaver, 401 West Market, and 382 West Market.
Move for a vote? Second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this matter?
Briefly, I just want to say that I'm looking forward to seeing action on Penn Market, which is one of the cases that HARB has approved, external work. And that's really what I wanted to share, that there will be some work going forward on Penn Market. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comment?
I just want to say that I think you're not the only one in the room that shares that. I certainly was excited to see it as well.
Thank you. Any other council comment?
Is there anybody that can elaborate on the work for the public that might be listening?
I'd be happy to read that. Yeah, if you want.
Information in the council agenda, the agenda?
I mean, just for those that might?
You want to elaborate on it?
Do you?
Do we have anyone here from the administration this evening?
That's what the administration, if they want to elaborate on what might? Just for the pub?
This is hard.
Okay. All right. Just for the public, that's what I was saying.
I'll summarize.
I can.
Or unless you want to.
No, please.
Okay. So it's new doors and windows. It is a ramp with railings. It's restoring circular wood windows, repointing and cleaning masonry, replacing storefronts at the corners, some interior renovations, and bracing to support the front facade from the roof side. And the windows and doors will be the same type used at the Rex Laurel Fire Station, which is at King and Duke. So.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bup.
Yep.
And then just, oh, may I? I just want to elaborate that we've all been waiting a very long time for this. But it takes time to put together the stacks of money to do a project that is at least at $3 million and might be in excess of that. I know we've been at? That's right. Somebody coming? But so we are very excited. And these are, this is just the beginning of what we are going to see. So this is just a first phase going through. And thank goodness, yes, we are finally seeing some movement. We had so many community meetings. We had so much engineering work and going back to the drawing board and seeing how much we could afford to do, that we finally have something that we can all move forward with together, including council's support of ARPA funding going towards this, other community investment in this. And yes, I'm very excited that we can finally say something is moving forward at Penn Market.
Thank you, Mayor Alfred.
Yep.
Do we have any public comment regarding this matter? Madam Clerk, can you please call a vote?
Bup?
Yes.
Johniskew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes. And that moves forward. Up next, we have Resolution Number 44. So introduced.
Resolution Number 44, introduced by Queen of Washington. Whereas Emily Moma, Site Design Concepts for Statewide Partners submitted a waiver for preliminary final subdivision plans, submission modification of monuments and markers, and approval of subdivision plans at the property located at 260 North Beaver Street. And whereas they requested various waivers, and whereas the plans are in accordance with the city's ordinances, and whereas the planning commission recommended approval condition upon satisfaction of city's review, now therefore be resolved, said plans are hereby approved.
Move to approve?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this matter?
Yes, Madam President. Briefly, I'd like to comment on comments in the literature that was provided. There were some general comments that the applicant currently shows the existing paved bituminous trail for the York Rail Trail.
Say that again, I'm sorry. Was it applicant?
I'm just reading the general comments. Number one, the applicant shows the existing paved trail for the York Rail Trail running through the proposed subdivided lots with no dedicated easement or right-of-way. And that is my main concern right now. And I would prefer, so I believe that needs, I feel like that needs to be resolved before we can issue a waiver or I'm not even sure, you know?
Ms. Councilwoman, if you don't mind, I can address that.
Thank you.
So the plan is the proposed approval of the plan that's before you. It was, it's conditioned upon the correct, not correction, but the addressing that right-of-way. The right-of-way is not set in stone in its current location with the proposed future development. And so there is, and I have been in communication with Statewide's attorney, because there will eventually be a separate easement agreement that addresses the, all the details related to the trail. The point right now is that the easement is shown on the plan and therefore it's legally enforceable. But the final details will be, are resolved by the proposed approval that is subject to the finalization of that easement.
Madam President, may I also address that in a little more simpler way? We knew when we put the rail trail in that it would likely be moved based on the development on those parcels. I think it is still the intent to move that, move the trail based on the design of the building, which has not yet been fully determined. So at that time, we would need an easement. But we need the easement for the final product. And the final product has not yet been totally, totally designed. So we will be coming back for, is that accurate, Madam Solicitor?
We, the final easement agreement won't necessarily be in front of you because it's a grant to the city. But the, the point is, is that it's drawn on the plan now. And so there will be an easement that the applicant will have to show and they'll have to enter into an easement agreement at some point.
Thank you, Solicitor Flowers, Mayor Alfred. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Tommy, with Site Design Concepts. We prepared this plan. And I am at a bit of a loss because I didn't have the conversations with our attorney and your solicitor. It is, it is my understanding, and I could be wrong here, but it's my understanding, I'm kind of halfway in between. I got a third story here. I'm kind of halfway in between here. There is no easement associated with the rail trail currently, except for the one portion that's right along the creek. That was given, that was given an easement originally. The rest of the trail was not. So right now, there's no easement on the portion of the trail that winds through the Northwest Triangle. There was a note on the plan that I think you're referring to. That should not have been on there. That was, because we did not show the easement. There was a dimension on there that came from, I'm not even sure where, but it was, it should have been frozen off. So there is no easement there now. It is, it is our hope and our request that we can get the subdivision plan approved to put these parcels back together first in a way to develop the Northwest Triangle as opposed to the way it was, I'm split up by the city previously for another developer that didn't come to fruition. And it'd be our hope that we could get that approval tonight, knowing that a couple of things are, one of a couple of things are going to happen. We're either going to come back as, as this development team with an easement and a land development plan that work together. Or this developer's going to go away and the city will still remain as the owner and can, and can control what easement goes on the trail as it, as it exists today. Right now, I think, I think the mayor's accurate. We don't have, putting an easement on the plan today at any with really, really is moot because we are going to have to move the trail in certain areas. Other areas, we've looked at, trying to keep it in place as much as possible. So it's just kind of a, it's kind of a chicken or an egg thing here. And I know that Statewide has worked in good faith with the city, the administration, the staff, trying to figure out what, what can be the highest and best use here. And we will continue to do that and make sure that when the time comes, that easement or that trail will have an easement on it that, that reflects everything that's needed. You know, right now, there's a, there's a stone trench along the edge of it that's used for stormwater. And, you know, I'm not sure that's going to last. We're gonna, you know, that's, as that trail changes and as we move it and we, we develop that site, I think we're going to be on the hook for taking care of that stormwater. So that trench isn't going to be there and isn't going to need to be in that lot of an easement. You know, the streetlights that are there need to be within an easement. But I'm not sure how that's going to be lit in the future. It could easily be lit from the rest of the stuff on our, on our site. So what we're requesting today is to move forward with a conditional approval based on that comment letter that you have forward, have in front of you. And address, continue to work with staff as we have been over the last probably three weeks to get this easement figured out, either, either between now and land development or at land development stages.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other council comment or questions? Is there any public comment or questions regarding this matter? Yes, sir.
Manuel Gomez, once again. Wow. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Bup, for highlighting this. For me, I wish there were more people here because that's a very active trail. But I'm a big, big, big proponent of this development. Not everybody is, but I am. Been for quite a long time. And I wish we'd stop calling it the Northwest Triangle. This forgives me PTSD. Probably not the only one. If John was here, he would get some too. I don't want to see the trail disturbed. And what I've seen in some previous public sessions where that it may be moved, not a tremendous amount. But I would hope that's the case. At this point, I would say I don't have a problem myself as a resident. And I consider that my neighborhood. I live right there. I go through there every day, just to be quite honest. It's my gem. And I'm not the only one. And for me, it's one of the safe pathways to be active in the city. And if you come from where I come, where I live directly, it's one of the most dangerous intersections where we don't have sidewalks. We have a rail crossing. It's very difficult to be active in that area. Despite that, you see a lot of activity, pedestrian activity, and otherwise people being active. For us to have the trail there immediately next to where people are in my neighborhood, it's a gem. It's a lifeline to me. I can't overstate that. It might sound hyperbolic, but I mean it. I also like this development tremendously. And it's very, very interesting because I've remarked to myself numerous times that whoever's directly working there, they're doing a tremendous job in being least impactful in terms of the trail where it is now. Debris, you name it, containing what they have to contain, their equipment as they come and go. I watch all of those things. That leads me to have faith that all in all, they're going to do it right there. Quite honestly. I wouldn't be opposed to a conditional agreement tonight. We need development to move forward. Too many times, what we have are too many hurdles that increase the time to market for developers like this. And sometimes they just don't survive, those hurdles. I'm wary of the trail being impacted. But at the same time, I do have faith based on what I've seen myself, what I've observed, even the few public sessions where this has been discussed. It's not the first time. It's not the first time.[1778.01] It's just my two cents.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment regarding this matter?
I just have a follow-up to make sure that people understand. Again, this was planned ahead of time, that we knew that development would potentially move the trail, but it was paid for with grant money and must be replaced in kind. It cannot disappear. It cannot be put in such a place where it is not going to provide the same kind of access, the same kind of recreation that it provides now. That is in writing, that was with the money that was received, so there can be no removal of the trail, or any way that it changes, that it would be a hardship to the community. And I guarantee you that I would not let that happen, and I'm pretty sure any future mayor would not let that happen as well.
Thank you, Mayor Helfrich.
Madam President, can I do a follow-on question?
Yes.
My follow-on question then is, if it's going, is there a way to ensure continuous operation during development? Or will there be a plan to, if you, if it's not going to stay where it is, that it is not closed during development? Is there a plan for that?
So we haven't gotten that far yet. The, the quick answer to your question, the simple answer is, yes, it'll remain open. The, the more complex answer is, maybe not in its current location. I mean, it was temporarily located through, I believe it was, was it Gass or Gay for a long time. It, it might end up there for six, eight, 10 months during the construction, just out of safety. So, yes, the trail will remain open in the exact location where it is today during development, no, but it will be reopened through that corridor as part of the development.
So I hear you're saying there might be a detour, but there would be at least a way to connect.
Correct.
Around the development.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as the old guy, next old guy after Mayor Brenner, I struggle with the names of places. I always go back to what it used to be. Yeah, no, it's a, it's an old Central Pennsylvania guy tree, and I apologize for that. But we can change the name. The name has been changed. It is Heritage Crossings, and we should start referring to it as that. And I'll be the, I'll be the first one to start doing that at the next meeting.
Thank you. Heritage Crossing. Is there any other public comment regarding this matter? Madam Clerk, please call a vote.
Bup?
Yes.
Johnisku?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have Resolution Number 45. So introduced.
Resolution Number 45, introduced by Mayor Washington. Whereas Lucas Wilson, Site Design Concepts, for 319 Chestnut LLC, submitted a waiver for preliminary final subdivision plans, submission, man development waiver, and, I'm sorry, and not consolidation at the property located at 319 Chestnut Street. And whereas the applicant is requesting waivers, and whereas the plans are in general accordance with the city's ordinances, and whereas the planning commission recommended approval, pending response to the city's review, now therefore be it resolved, that, that the waivers for the preliminary final subdivision, land development approval, waiver for street trees, and waiver for street lighting is hereby affirmed.
Moved to approve.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there a council comment regarding this matter?
Yes. I want to make clear my position that a council vote on any land development is more than a formality. It really is a vote on behalf of our constituents. I attend every planning and zoning board meeting, and at the planning commission, in a year and a half, I have not seen one single denial, even when the city is strongly recommending denial. So this concerns me in general, but this particular land development plan concerns me. I'm just going to quickly refer to general comments. I know the planner was very concerned, Ms. Griffin, about the lack of a leasehold plan that there are multiple leaseholders, which leads to a slippery slope when it comes to responsibility for issues. She felt it was, the city staff felt it was very important to have this in place before approving, because we want to protect the community. There's also a concern under general comments under four, weakness with rainwater drainage. Given the way rains have been going recently, I think this is something that we should make sure that we're covering again, in benefit of the community. I was very much concerned about the amount of comment that the fire department made regarding access, and given that this is very important, our fire department is, you know, looks out for our community. I take their concerns very seriously, and given the fact that this is also near a school, you know, I'm very much concerned. The final, staff agrees with the above, staff recommends denial waiver request. Multiple leaseholder agreements, you know, exist, and in addition to all this, I would approve this development, and I think development of any kind's good, if these things could be resolved. Moving ahead without resolving things that might impact the community is just rushing into something that we may regret. So I would not support this until our planning staff is satisfied that these conditions have been met.
Thank you, Councilwoman Janesku. Any other council comment?
I have a question. Could someone give us an overview of what the development is?
Yes, real quickly, I'm going to give you a very quick overview.
That would be great.
And then the client, Mr. Tom Springle is here, he can give you more details, because I'm just not a fiber guy. But this is, this is part of what was, you know, United Fiber and Data.
Right.
LightPath has come in, they've purchased that, some of that land over there, they've also purchased the underground conduit and the cable from Ashburn to Manhattan. And if, it's my understanding that this, along those, so as the fiber, as, as the signal goes through the, the cables, the blast cables, over, over distance, it starts to lose its ability to move, and so it gets charged with a small little bit of electricity. So every 50, 7,500 miles, they need to pump a little more electricity in there to keep it moving through their cable. So that's what this facility is going to do.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions to that?
You provided what's your name, sir?
Tom Springle. LightPath Fiber.
You're from where?
LightPath Fiber.
LightPath Fiber?
LightPath. I'm with the company.
Light.
Light.
Light. Oh, not LightPath. Thank you. Can you spell it, please?
L.I.G.H.T.P.A.T.H. Fiber.
Okay. LightPath.
Thank you.
Got you. There's another organization here called LightPath.
We had this conversation, and every time we talk about this topic.
Okay.
I didn't know if you need me to elaborate a little more on the building. So the building is a self-sustained building, air-conditioned, lighting, et cetera, you know, fire safety suppression. To elaborate on what he was talking about, so the signal moves along fiber optic cable, can only go so far, then it has to regenerate. So it hits equipment that regenerates it and sends it to the next regen site. So that is the building that we're looking to build there, so that we can just move the signal out of New York, New Jersey, through Philly, on down to Ashburn, Virginia. That's the essence of the building.
Thank you. Councilwoman Buckingham, do you have any further questions? Any other further council comments or questions?
Quick question. I didn't realize that it's a power generating, or that you will need power to do this. How will you?
It's not like.
Do you need to create power to charge the?
So it's, it's like light pulses. So it, it sends light pulses down the fiber, and it just bounces off the fiber as it goes. So it's more like electrons. So it's not like fiber, like, excuse me, power that powers the lights and stuff like that. It's not like that.
You don't need to build a generator or?
There will be a generator, so that you have, because part of these services provide, 911 services, provide medical services. So the people that are on these fiber, you know, it's any vertical you can think of, hospitals, big business, schools, et cetera. So we do have generators, there will be a generator, a backup power to keep the building running if we do lose power to the facility.
It's just backup power.
Correct.
The electricity from the, from the power office, it'll be an electric service that creates the electric pulses from the, from the facility.
Normal, commercial electricity, not?
It's not a data center with heat and, and all the things that come with data centers though.
Is, and this is on the property where the old prison is, correct?
Yes.
And are you looking, you're building a new building beside the old prison?
Yes.
It sounds like, and, and not using the prison itself?
No, the prison is being evaluated to determine if it can be used. They, 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 they may have a need for another building on the site, and they're trying to figure out if, when that happens, if they can salvage the old prison, or if they have to demo it and take it down.
One question I heard, or concern I heard, was that it is so close to the school, right? Good School is right there, poorhouse run, and there were some issues with the street, the lack of trees that were, that it was maybe not feasible to put trees and lighting, and there were some concerns about that it's so close to the school, it's attract, could become an attractive nuisance, it may be now, if they, I'm not sure how it is now, but there are stories of kids who do go up on the prison roof, and, so we know.
Yeah. And, and, and the prison is an issue for attraction of that. And we were actually there on site with the police to go over that and, at the prison, and to run out some folks there. I, I didn't get all the issues that Councilwoman Janesku brought up, so I would like to go through them, because I think we, I think we have addressed all those, and I'm hoping that the, the staff here can back us up. Let me, I'm sorry, you went very quickly, I wasn't writing down.
Okay, let's start with general comments. I was trying to be brief for Clerk Thompson tonight. But that's a lost cause. General comments, number one, that there are multiple leaseholds exist on the property, without definition of boundaries or responsibilities, that's my key word. We recommend that a leasehold plan be prepared to define these rights. I'd like to see that before we proceed, because, you know, what happens is, you know, if something goes wrong, everyone's pointing the finger at each other, and the city's left, you know, holding a bag.
So that was, that was discussed with the planning commission, and these are just leases, they're not easements, they're leases, and the owner of the property, which is a, which is an LLC owned by LightPath, they are responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the, of all the facilities on those, on that property. There is, there are two leaseholds, two other leaseholds. It's a, it's a Starlink Satellite Farm, and then another small, very small, maybe, I don't know, it's not even a 20 by 20 building, that's another regen station for another line. But that was discussed in depth at the, at the planning commission.
I was there, and I got the feeling that city staff wasn't necessarily satisfied with.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
So it was discussed, because, you know, you had the gap in between now and when we had it with the planning commission, because you guys were all, but it was discussed in another pre-development meeting, I believe the gentleman's name is Nat Defary?
He's our assistant.
Yes. Oh, okay. Hey, Nat, how are you? So he did, he did satisfy some of the concerns with that, that he is responsible for all that, and it's not actually another building, it's actually like a concrete satellite dish type thing that's there. It's DQ, I believe it's DQE, if I'm not mistaken. So he did satisfy with us that it will be taken care of, that Light, LightPath owns everything, and that they have all the responsibility for that.
Okay, because that remained a concern at the conclusion of the meeting.
Correct, it was, yes, and he did clear that up for us. He came in from out of state where he's from, and he did clear that up, and there will be no more, there's no subdivision or anything like that, they're just.
So we know the who, you know, the, all right. As long as we know who's responsible.
Yes, we do.
And you're satisfied, okay.
Yeah, and I did meet him personally, so, yeah, he was right there on the thing. And what was the other one?
All right. Looking at the entire drainage, there are a lot of concerns, but I'm looking at number 400 general comments, and looking at the grading and the existing structures on site, it doesn't appear that the entire drainage area intended for the subsurface infiltration bed one will adequately convey stormwater to the facility, particularly the northwest corner, dah 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 dah. Anyway, it's inadequate drainage. And given the way the rains have been coming lately, you know, is that something that we should be resolving before we move ahead on that? Has there been any more communication that, you know, satisfies the staff on this?
So I think that, so I think that that, I think this is just a misprint between our, between our plan and our report. That's been revised, and I believe we've reasoned that in here. These are just, this was just a typo between our report that didn't match the elevations and the information we had.
Okay. And then finally, the New York City Fire Department had three concerns. The second concern had one, two, three, four subpoints. Again, you know, I take any claim, any concern of the fire department very seriously. Has there been any kind of resolution of those concerns?
Yes. So the gravel drive's been widened in the back, and we have a, we now have a, we call them a hammerhead, but it's a T turnaround for the trucks. So that, that was addressed. We met out on the site after the staff meeting, and, and walked the site with the police and the fire company, and, let's see. The issue is, the, the issue they have is with Lauks Road, which was, which was given back by the city to the former owner. So it's a private road. There are buildings on that road. The end towards Chestnut is gated and locked. The end towards Queen Street is gated with a Knox, a Knox box and a lock system, so that fire, fire trucks can enter. That one was broken, and the other end was, was locked. This developer does not have control over the one that doesn't work, it's always open right now, but they were gonna, this owner was going to work with the, with the owner of that gate to get it operational, or keep it open all the time, whatever they decide. We also agreed that we would put a gate with a Knox box on our end of it, and we walked away from that. Were you out there, Nancy?
I was.
It was very hot.
I was at the meeting.
Yeah. No, we, we were out there with the police and the fire company, and everybody walked away satisfied, and that's what our plan is to pick now, is a gate, and then just, at the other end, it's kind of out of our hands. We said we would work with them, or ask them to fix that, and it's a, it's a right-of-way issue, right? It's, it's not ours, we use it, so it's up to the other owner to do it. And the, and the fire company said, look, if you, if, if you can't get anywhere with that, and, and it can't remain open at the other end, we'll get involved and deal with that through that owner.
So they also were talking about a gravel, a gravel access road?
That's the one in the back of the building that we, the gravel access road was, was rather narrow, I think we had 12 or 14 feet. It was just an access drive to service and fuel the emergency generator. The fire department wanted to have access to the rear of the building, so we widened that to 18 feet, which is their, their, their standard, and we put that turnaround in back there as well.
Now, this might be a question from Mayor. Is it time to give that city that's fenced off that street back to the city and make it a public, you know, way again? I know that neighborhood's been very upset about that.
There is, that is illegal, once, and, and I will, I will cede this to, to the solicitor after I'm done, because I have looked into that, when the plan, when the original plans, if you recall, to go way back, when I was on council and Mayor Bracy was, was in charge, the, the company at the time was going to put in a data center in the prison. We were told that, and then I negotiated the deal, actually as a council member, with the, with the owner at the time, saying, okay, when you're ready, we will cede the, we will cede the road to you, because they needed, this was going to be a high-security data building, and they needed a big setback for, for the type of data that they were keeping. That's why all those houses were removed, and that's why there was a big spread around there. Okay? Then they came to us and said, well, we're not quite ready to move on the development, but the bank will not give us loans unless we own, unless we control the street. So we all agreed that, hey, you're almost there, you're almost across the finish line. So the city ceded the street, and then the project did not happen, but there is no stepping back of taking back property, once the city has already ceded it to another entity. At this time, and I hope that LightPath also knows this, that I have a request into the company that controls the street, I've been told that you have no control over any section of York Street, or of that small section of Lauks Mill Road, that it's the other company that controls that. I have a request to put in a trail that connects the rail trail out in front of Rev Stadium with our Broad Street Greenway, that would make a public access going down York through Lauks, and there would not be, there would not, there would still not be traffic, the traffic access would still be controlled, but there would be a path for bicyclists and for walkers to continue to use that path. So I hope you guys knew that, and that you've already expected that. But that's where we're. But that's where we're at right now. We have not heard back from this other, from the company that actually controls the street, who got it in the kind of a split of assets that occurred during the split and sale of these different properties. So that's where we are right now. We do hope to gain access. The request is in. That's what I can tell you right now.
That's good to hear. I'm sure the Northeast neighborhood appreciates that.
Thank you, Mayor Alfred.
Yep.
Is there any further comments on Councilwoman Janesku?
Um, no. Do you need?
I have nothing further if nobody's got any questions.
Oh, okay.
There was one other question, was it over here? Oh, the street trees, the street trees. So there's already street trees across the street on Chestnut. On our side, unfortunately, I mean, the only reason we're requesting a waiver is because it's riddled with utilities and utility easements. We can't put a street tree in there. We did agree that, and that's right here, but we did agree in the staff meeting that once the prison is either renovated or a new building goes in there, they would put street trees on Chestnut in front of, on the half of the property that the prison is on. But on the half that we're developing right now, it's all utility lines and easements. So there's just no room there.
Thank you. And I was talking with someone about it and they liked the tree concept, but I don't know if shrubbery could also serve as a barrier to trespassers or curious people. So I don't know if you have any landscaping planned. I don't know that that's required.
Yeah, so our site's gonna be fenced for security.
Oh, it's gonna be fully fenced.
There'll be a gate across our entrance because there's literally, there's not, there's no full-time workers here. There'll be people in and out, but it's kind of an operational. And they're, how often are you there? Can you be there?
Basically like maintenance and stuff like that. And people want to access there, but things like that.
Okay.
Couple of times a month.
Couple of times a month from that.
Just make sure everything's okay. There's nothing out of order.
You have plans for cameras then on the outside?
Cameras, yep. And we discussed, yeah, full surveillance inside and out.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Can I, can I quickly, before we vote, just check in with our planner one more time? Are you completely satisfied now that everything, that all your concerns have been met since, you know, that Planning Commission meeting?
Yes, yes. Because like I said, Nat just came in not too long ago.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, Councilwoman Bup, I just wanted to add one last comment. The railroad controls most of that property to the north of York Street. And there has been a request made. A third party has offered to do some landscaping and things in that area. You were there at that meeting. We have not heard back. And that's not unusual to not hear back for a couple of years from the railroad company on something that doesn't directly address their system. So a third party has offered to try and do something more there. Again, no word back.
Thank you, Mayor Alfred.
Thank you.
Is there any further, is there any public comment regarding this matter?
Manuel Gomez, resident, city of York. I seem to be at ground zero for a lot of these discussions today. Now, we're really in my backyard. Habitatage Commons slightly to the west. This smack where I live. And I cross through there all the time, of course. If we talk about stormwater management, just the general infrastructure there, I've counted at least four drains. Mostly, if I would guess, in the property, within the property boundaries of the railroad operator. Absolutely clogged. It would take manpower to unclog these. And here I am. Now I'm probably gonna have to take some ownership of it. And I was planning some. But I would imagine that a lot of the difficulties that would be faced by these developers to gain these approvals, they've been there for quite some time. Any of the other properties adjoining that area face the same thing. Quickly, with the vacation of the street, I was out of town when I remember it fondly. I still used to tune in. Never knew I would be back, but here I am. I've never, and I'm gonna say this again, not that I know much, but I've never seen a street be vacated and then clogged back. Never seen it in the state of Pennsylvania. Never. I'm only saying this myself. I'm only saying this because it keeps coming up all the time. I said, can we reopen it? Can we take it back? I don't even know how. So we probably shouldn't put too much resources in times wishing upon that star. What we can probably do is build better cooperation. That I'm sure of. Because the state of affairs now can generally be improved, that's for sure. Because let me tell you, probably the only direction we can go is up. The area has pretty much fallen into disarray. I'm glad to see development because it brings attention to the issues raised by Councilwoman Janesku. Thank you for that. Always incisive. And it's good to highlight these issues because it brings attention. It brings attention to an area that needs it. I welcome the development, particularly if it's gonna be done so diligently. And I know the protocol has been a little bit disjointed, but I do appreciate the back and forth in the discussion between planning, council, and everybody else that's involved. Okay? I appreciate it myself, especially living there. Sometimes things happen quickly. They don't happen at all and then it's a rush. But I welcome it.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment regarding this matter? Administration comment?
Manuel, the drains you spoke of, are they inside that rectangle of the rail yard? Is that where you're at?
I think that building immediately north of, this might orient you. So you're facing Queen Street, you're looking north. Immediately on the right-hand side, you cross the tracks. There's a huge drain there. Every other, every other drainage section there is similar to that one. There are just the weeds, the litter, it's out of hand. And I know that it's the railroad operator primarily that we would have to work with. I've been touchy-feely. Sometimes I wanna say, I'll just go on there and remove it. I'm old, I'm already injured. What if something happens is what I tell myself.
It's, I'll reach out to railroad tomorrow.
And that's the thing. So thank you for that.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments regarding this matter? Madam Kirk, please call the vote. Bup? Yes. Janesku?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham? Washington? Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have Resolution Number 46. So introduce.
Resolution Number 46, introduced by Queen of Washington. Whereas New Metzger Site Design Concepts on behalf of Weaver Warehouse submitted a land development waiver at the property located at 127 North Broad Street. And whereas the applicant is requesting a waiver of the land development. And whereas the plans are in accordance with the city's ordinances and the Planning Commission recommended approval conditioned upon a construction bond for public improvements. Now therefore be it resolved that the waiver for the land development is hereby affirmed.
Move to approve. It has been moved and seconded. Is there council comment regarding this matter?
No, I'm okay with this one.
Briefly, I just, oh, Paula Teresley is the city planner. Are you okay with the bond situation?
Please come to the mic.
Oh, God. I don't know where you are, but okay. So yes, they did, we did put some stipulations that a condition that there will be a bond issue for public improvements with the construction part phase of that. We did get them to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other council comment? Any public comment regarding this matter? Madam Kirk, please call the roll. Bup?
Yes.
Janesku?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington? Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have Resolution Number 47. So introduce.
Resolution Number 47, introduced by Queen of Washington. Whereas Peel and Company submitted a waiver for preliminary final subdivision plans, submission, land development waiver and lot consolidation at the property located at 15 East Philadelphia Street. And whereas the applicant is requesting various waivers. And whereas the plans are in accordance with the city's ordinances and the Planning Commission recommended approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the approval of the waivers for the preliminary final subdivision plan, land development waiver and approval for lot consolidation is hereby affirmed.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this matter? Any public comment? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Buckingham, no, no, that's not it. Name down there. Oh, Bup?
Yes.
Janesku?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington? Yes, and that moves forward. Moving on to our final passage of bills and resolutions. Up next, we have final passage of Bill Number 15, move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded.
And that is Bill Number 15, which was introduced by Queen of Washington at the June 3 meeting of council, amending the 2025 budget for economic and community development, appropriating money not otherwise appropriated for Fund 29 for the environmental study required for the Affordable Housing Developer Program and impediments to Affordable Fair Housing Study in the amount of $29,684.50 to add said remaining funds from fiscal '24 to '25.
Is there any council comment regarding this? Yes, Councilwoman Bup. Thank you, Madam President. In our May 28 committee meeting, there was a discussion of this rollover or money not otherwise appropriated. And our business administrator said that this was being rolled over because last year there was a slow start by the consultant. And I wanted to ask who the consultant is and if the project is complete now. I think I heard that they were to be completing it soon. And if it is complete, can we as council or city have the product, have a copy of the product to read?
I'll have to look back to when this was first brought as a budget amendment to the '24 budget because it was late in the year that we brought this to you to add the ARPA money specifically for this project. This was just then thinking that, because it wasn't until like October, I think, that we brought it. And again, yes, it was a slow start in terms of them being able to get through the project in order to have all the invoicing done and submit to the city by the end of 2024, which we weren't anticipating. Hence, it wasn't rolled into the budget automatically for 2025. I believe the consultant is M and L. I'd have to look up the details out of our vendor system. My understanding is that the studies were done the last time I heard and were with the Deputy Director for Housing for Review. So I'm not sure if they've been finalized yet. Again, the purposes for these studies are for the HUD programs that we provide. So I don't see why they wouldn't be public documents in the end. But we'd have to follow up with the Housing Bureau for that.
Thank you. Is there any further comments, Councilwoman Bup? Is. Yeah, I'm sorry. Would this be part of the second quarter ARPA report? Or would it go with the third quarter 2025 ARPA report?
We have to add it to the budget before we can spend it. So this would be the third quarter.
It would be in the third quarter. Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other council comment regarding this matter? Any public comment? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Bup?
Yes.
Janesku?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington? Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have final passage of Bill Number 17, move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded.
That was Bill Number 17, which was introduced by Queen of Washington at the June 3 meeting of council, amending the '25 budget for the Bureau of Health to appropriate revenue and expenditures for the Healthy Moms, Healthy Babies Home Visiting Program in the amount of $10,000.
Is there any council comment regarding this? Any public comment?
Manuel Gomez, these are state funds? That's a state grant?
Yes.
It wouldn't be, that's not a pass-through thing. So it wouldn't be one of the ones that were potentially impacted by the cuts that came from the federal level?
We have Monica here with us from the Health Bureau, Monica.
This is just adjusting our budget because we received.
Go to a microphone.
You have to go to a microphone, Monica.
I just, that was a general question, not necessarily specific to the very detail of this program, but just me wondering out loud if that was one that in the future may potentially be impacted. If that makes sense.
It makes total sense. And to your second part of that question, yes, could potentially down the road not be there. One of our funders had additional funding. At what happens, what does happen with some funding sources is we're allocated a certain amount of money. And then at the end of the fiscal year, some funders will go back and say, gosh, somebody didn't spend all their money or we actually have more money than we thought. Then they will reallocate it accordingly. And so that's what happened in this case. So moving forward, there's a lot of unknowns. So we're just gonna stay the course, do what we can and keep searching for other sources.
Thank you, Monica. Is there any further public comments? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Bup?
Yes.
Janesku?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington? Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have new business and introduction of bills. We have introduction of Bill Number 18.
So introduce.
Bill Number 18, introduced by Alicia Dennis, amending the '25 budget for recreation and parks by appropriating additional revenue and expenditures in the amount of $10,645 for grant received from the York County Community Foundation for the Continental Square Large Planner Landscaping and Watering.
That is a bill that will say.
Up next, we have introduction of bill number nineteen. So introduce.
Bill number nineteen introduced by Queen of Washington. Bill number nineteen introduced by Queen of Washington, amended the twenty-five budget for the Bureau of Health in the amount of $53,239.26 due to a reduction in funding and the reallocation of existing funds awarded from the Family Health Council of Central PA to align with the revised program priorities to provide SCD testing and outreach services for the period of July first through December thirty-first, 2025.
And that is a bill that will sit as well. Up next for new business, resolution number forty-eight.
So introduce.
Resolution number forty-eight introduced by Felicia Dennis. Whereas the city desires a contract for services for Veterans Memorial Park Basketball, and whereas visitor received with Kinsley being the lowest bidder, now therefore be it resolved, council hereby awards a contract for said services in the total amount of $241,346.50.
Move for a vote. Second.
That's been moved and seconded.
Is there any council comment regarding this matter?
Yes. Well, first, I found it interesting that, you know, looking at the data, the information that the price, the estimate, you know, dropped by half, you know, which is good. But on the other hand, I'm wondering if this is the best use of ARPA funds. I think we have some other pressing issues that we might be able to apply those funds to, that, you know, we don't need to discuss at this time. But, you know, I'm all for maintaining our parks and keeping up our facilities in good shape, but I'm concerned about spending ARPA money on this one.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dennis. Is there any further public comment?
I'm also
I mean, council comment, I apologize.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm also concerned about the spending of ARPA money and as we haven't received reports on the status of where we are with our spending to date. We haven't, I don't know if the June thirtieth second quarter is due yet. I haven't received a June thirty report. So, because I don't know exactly where we stand with the ARPA funds, I am also hesitant to approve this.
May I address this?
The administration?
Thank you. First, let me say in regarding reallocation, we are going to be discussing some reallocation of funds, but I hope council recalls that we cannot create new places to allocate them to. So what you would be doing is reallocating them to some other existing line item. You would not be, you would not be addressing something new that we have not already included in our plan as of December thirty-first, 2024. I want to just start there. And then the second is that one of the things that I had heard during comp plan process, which I will bring up in my administration comments, but also from the community at large in that area, was that the one basketball court at Gerard Park was not sufficient for the population that was in the area. So they saw this huge park area, areas being dedicated to pickleball, areas being dedicated to ice skating, areas being dedicated to things that the neighborhood weren't utilizing very heavily. And they asked for something that they could utilize. So I think this is very much in the spirit of making sure that our individuals, particularly if you recall, the ARPA money was supposed to be used to help uplift those affected most by the pandemic, that was considered people of the lower income levels and people of color. This request came from representatives of those groups saying that we need this additional recreational facility. We have a large swath of land, I think the largest in the city, and nothing dedicated to the sport of basketball, which is a very, very popular sport in our city.
There was a basketball court that existed.
Yeah, there was a basketball court that had been removed. So we are looking to bring that amenity back for the community. So that is the reason for the use of it. I think it is one of the highest uses that we could have to bring back something that had been taken away and bring an amenity right in line with the directives from President Biden at the time to support those communities.
Thank you, Mayor Helfer.
Yes.
Am I incorrect in thinking that the original $200,000 was part of the final ARPA allocations that we approved at the end of last year?
Yes, this $200,000 has been in the last three years' budgets. It was one of the first projects that was approved, and we have not touched any of it to date because we had to get the plans in place and do the RFP and get to this point in time. So yes, we do, this will help us not only get this project done, but get $200,000 of our ARPA money out the door.
So we've approved it previously. Now we're assigning it to a contractor.
Correct.
So, and I just wanted to clarify, I wanted to clarify that for everyone. And also, we were really surprised when the original bid came in at over twice what we had, the amount we had approved. But it had had some embellishments added, if I might. And they went back and reviewed it and went as per our original instructions. Okay. Our request, excuse me, in the RFP, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman Buckingham.
Yes.
Is there any further council comment regarding this matter? Any?
So, I apologize now, I'm confused. If we received two bids from two contractors, and was this bid that's presented here modified before the comparison to the other contractor or after?
Afterwards. Both of the competitive bids were above $400,000. We went back and value engineered the project and worked with Kinsley a little bit, cut the project down in half to get it to where we could afford it. We got it back to where our original budget was, and then a little bit had to be added.
Thank you.
Any further council comment regarding this matter? Any public comment? Madam Clerk, please, oh, yes, sir.
Manuel Gomez, you might not believe it, but I always develop a complex when there's nobody here. Just keep tapping the well over and over and over. I have to back Councilwoman John Esquie on Bub's concerns on this, with the key distinction, of course, from the mayor, just appropriate. I would favor potentially reallocating funds, but yeah, there's things going on in the background where there's a bit of a shot clock. We have to get the money spent. We have to get the money spent. We just do. That's something we all know. And unfortunately, I think that that should impact your decision as well. We gotta get the money out the door. You probably already know what I'm hinting at.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Bub?
No.
John Esquie?
With hesitance, yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have resolution number forty-nine.
So introduce.
Resolution number forty-nine introduced by Felicia Dennis. Is there a motion to read this by short title?
I make a motion to read this by short, read that by short title.
Second. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Resolution number forty-nine introduced by Felicia Dennis, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of property acquisition easement documents for the College Avenue Bridge project specific to parcel number twenty-five.
Move for a vote. Second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this?
Madam President, I would just, I would just thank the administration for making sure we received some funds for it instead of just having it condemned. Thank you.
Any further council comment?
None.
Is there any public comment regarding this? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Bub?
Yes.
John Esquie?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have resolution number fifty. So introduce.
Resolution number fifty introduced by Queen of Washington. Whereas Children's Aid Society requested the release of public improvement security funds associated with the land development plan at the property located at 636 West Poplar Street, and whereas the security bond amount received was $61,128.10, and where a city council approved the associated final land development plan at its September eleventh meeting of 2023, and whereas the request for the release of funds in said amount was viewed by the city staff, and they have determined it can be released, now therefore be it resolved, council hereby approves the release of said funds.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this?
I just want to make sure I understand. So this was essentially like a security deposit that was paid, and now that the work has been done, we can give it back to them? Okay. I just, this was a new concept for me. This was approved, you know, before I was on council, and I just wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilwoman Dennis. Is there any further council comment?
Just to say that the Children's Aid Society has done a wonderful job with the development of their new building on Poplar Street, and recommend people check it out, and very pleased with this. Thank you.
Is there any public comment regarding this? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Bub?
Yes.
John Esquie?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. At this time, we do not have any requests for future meetings. Do we have any council comments this evening? And I believe we have, oh, yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so since we are all a council of women, I've been looking for women to promote or thank at each meeting, or that's a personal goal. And I wanted to identify Nicole Gaines. She was given a hands-on award at the Trean Bu Classic, and I just wanted to, it says year after year, she is hands-on in her community in multiple ways. Her resume is super long within York, and we always wanted to recognize those giving back. So I want to redouble the, the congratulations to Nicole Gaines for her hands-on award. Another point to bring up, which is a question for administration, which is, I remember last year, approximately this time, we were given the crossing guard, a crossing guard contract to review and approve, and I didn't know where we are with that for this year, and wondered if that could be spoken to. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Buck. Is there any further council comment? I believe we have comments for administration this evening?
Yes, just a comment there that RFP is being reviewed right now and is about to be opened. Or, or it was open and we're
It was open. We received about six responses back, and we're reviewing them.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to follow up on the discussion regarding all of the comments on that plan. I have already gone out and talked to our planner, and I want to make sure that we work with council to make this, make sure that any meetings that occur after are included, and any reports on those meetings are included in your packets. I was told that a report was made. I'm not sure where it ended up, if it ended up in an email or where. But let's include, we will, the administration would like to provide any kind of follow-up meeting reports, and then we would ask that council or the council clerk include that in the packet of information so that such confusion, you know, I totally understand, Councilwoman, where you thought the project was left and where you were being asked to approve it. We saw through an extended conversation that we probably didn't need to have that conversation if you had just had that information. And so I think that is a process improvement that we can easily make.
Thank you, Mayor Helfer.
Yes. Now, the second item I have is on the comprehensive plan. So it has been a long summer. It has been, what?
I'm sorry, what was that? I thought you were talking about the comprehensive plan before. What was you, what were you?
No, I was talking about the, was it a subdivision?
The subdivision.
The land development.
The Chestnut Street.
The Chestnut Street Land Development Plan. My apology.
In the future, the administration
Yeah, there had been onsite, there had been multiple meetings to engage regarding the comments and to secure the approval of all of our different departments. That had already occurred. You were not aware of it. So now hopefully we can fix that in the future.
Thank you.
Regarding the comp plan, and Madam President, I apologize, but I have to disagree with you on the reporting that has occurred. It has been a long summer, but I have to say that on May, I believe you said the last report you got was in April. On May sixth, we all met except for, except for Councilwoman Dennis, she was not present. But we met, and I also invited, I think, who we can believe would be a presumed future leader of the city of York, to also engage in this conversation, because the comprehensive plan, because, let's be honest, I'm gone in six months. The comprehensive plan affects the city. Some of us might not even be here when the comprehensive plan affects the city, you know, as far as being in office. So I wanted to make sure that we took a good look at how we were presenting ourselves to, to the public and to government officials. Madam President, you were correct in saying that the comprehensive plan was important in grant funding. And part of that grant funding has to do with federal grants. And there's frequently a little thing where you have to check a box saying, hey, was this part of your comprehensive plan, you know, was the thing you're asking money for? And frankly, I don't know how much the comprehensive plan is reviewed by the grantors, but there is a thing that says, that references the comprehensive plan in grant applications. So here is what has happened with the comprehensive plan, and this was all discussed in this May sixth meeting. Just, just to be, to be clear about what council has been informed of and where we have been in this process. So due to the fact that the language in this grant or in this comprehensive plan could affect future grants for the city of York, I was very concerned about the language therein. Basically, the report was made almost entirely under an entirely different federal administration that had different expectations of what they would find and what they would approve of in grant applications. Under the Biden administration, things like diversity, equity, and inclusion were encouraged and expected to be in documents and in grant applications. As of January twenty-first or twenty-second, we received an executive order from the President of the United States saying these things could not be included in federal activities, in federal documents, in things like that. There is a nearly ten-page list of different words that I provided to all of the council members that, from a New York Times report, another one from a Forbes report, another one from the U.S. Conference of Mayors, that explains all of the things now that can lower your value or flag your grant application for further review, saying that, that these, this language is no longer acceptable. In, directly after those, those executive orders came out, I instructed the then director of the Department of Economic and Community Development to go through the comprehensive plan and see how the wording could be altered for the new reality that we are living in. The fact that hundreds of words in the comprehensive plan were now considered inappropriate by the new administration. I, for two months, I thought that was getting done, and it had never gotten done. My direction was ignored. So at the last minute, I attempted to do the work myself that I had assigned to staff, because that's what happens when the work doesn't get done, the person in charge better do the work. So I took it upon myself to begin to replace words with other words that would hopefully continue to convey our meanings, but not flag the attention of those that were trying to find reasons not to support our city with grants or with funding. I found myself falling short of that and asked for an extension from council. I then realized that the question was much broader than that. And the question remains, and this is the question that I posed to council on May the sixth. What do we want to represent in our comprehensive plan? What kind of language do we want to accept the fact that if we put forward the comprehensive plan that if we put forward the comprehensive plan that was provided to us by the consultant during the previous presidential administration, do we want to, do we want that to be what we now reference to the federal government when we ask the federal government for support? Do we want to leave it as it was, or do we want to change it? I also put forth at that time, May the sixth, after the update that you referenced, I said, we have a federal budget coming up. We don't even know what we are risking at this time. Because this is a real question right now. If the federal government is now deciding to not give any money to our city, then maybe we can say whatever we want because we have nothing to lose. But maybe, over the next few administrations, maybe they will take a different tact. Maybe they will still seem similar, but maybe they will not be as harsh in their decision-making. And maybe they will open the well again and possibly provide us some funding. If that is the case, then we want to make sure that we have the correct language. That is where we left it on May the sixth. We were going, we all agreed that we were going to wait until the budget was passed by Congress to then analyze the budget, determine what our next steps should be after that time. Now, that budget has been passed. I contacted the Senator's office, Senator Fetterman's office, and I said, what does this budget mean? Their response was, we're still not sure. Because the budget that was passed was so vague that it allowed for the federal executive administration to make a lot of, a lot of those choices internally. And I believe, Madam, Madam President, I just recently made, used the example with you that if the council chose to send me a budget that just said, oh, this is kind of what we want to do, then all the responsibility of the decision-making of how to spend the city's money would be on, on the mayor, on, and the, and the mayor's staff. And that's essentially what has happened in Washington, D.C., is that now even our senators don't know exactly what is happening. So to let you know where I am right now, I have not gotten a decent analysis, as many of you may know, I got back to the United States last night. I have not yet had a chance to get a decent analysis of the budget. I don't know what it means yet, what our language means, and I plan to come back to council again in our meetings where we discuss things, but don't vote on any things, on anything, and find out what the council thinks now and what a future administration thinks now. Because as a mayor that only has a little less than six months to go, I don't think it's my choice of what is in this comprehensive plan. I think it's your choice, and I think there are some other people that I expect to lead the city after me, that it should be their choice, and that is where the comprehensive plan is now. We have not left council without knowledge. We left council with an agreement that we were going to hold back on deciding what kind of language is brought to council until we see what the effects of that language might be. So now it is all out in the public about the process that we have been going through. It's a very difficult process. I didn't really want to talk about it in public because everything we say is being reviewed by Washington, D.C. And so now, the administration now knows that our process is to figure out what's going to trigger them and what's not going to trigger them. That is my process right now and for the next six months. And as you know, other votes that I have made on things such as the Trust Act have been based on the same thing. How should we represent ourselves to the decision-makers in Washington, D.C. that may still, by chance, benefit the city? If they choose not to benefit the city at all, then perhaps we want to just tell them in our own language everything that we think about them. I don't know that that's my suggestion right now. I still hold out hope that we have friends in Washington, D.C. that still care about cities, that still think that CDBG money and home money and other money that is being threatened right now benefit the entire United States, not just the cities. I'm still holding out hope. All of that said, I plan to bring council any kind of assessment that I can get regarding the effects of the now passed budget, federal budget, and any follow-up policies that are occurring. And then we will, then I will ask council the same question that I did on May the sixth. How do you think we should proceed? What do you want to see in front of you? What kind of language do you want to see? Because I've got options, and I'm not necessarily the one that should make this decision. So I hope that clarifies, and I hope it, I hope it jives. I hope it's in agreement with recollections of those that were at that meeting on May the sixth, because that is why you have not heard anything more, because there has been nothing, and that's why the community has not heard anything more, because there has been nothing to report. Because we are trying to deserve, determine how we want to be portrayed over the next ten to twenty years to people that might be able to help us, help finance things like helping the unhoused, career training, new homes during a housing crisis. All of those things are balanced on how we talk about ourselves in this comprehensive plan. That's what I've been going through, and that's what I thought we were partners on in how we were moving forward. So I was a little surprised, and I, and again, I hope that, that brings back your recollections of that meeting that we had, and I hope that your memories are the same as the notes that I have on the discussions that we had at that meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Helfer. It's your responsibility to provide us with a comprehensive plan for us to review and for us to vote on. Thank you. It is seven fifty-nine P.M., and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.